Pause a moment, we thank you for the blessings you've showered upon us. We're mindful of those that are less fortunate than us. We're mindful of those that are hurting, those that have body ailments and pray for restoration or be your will. Father God, we pray today as we do the county's business, we ask for wisdom that you would share with us that what we need give those that protect our land and our freedoms world over, those who wear badges and uniform, please protect them. So add to this prayer, we pray in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, June 20th, 1916. Minutes were sent via email, and corrections if not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all three.
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll thirteen, for calendar year 2016, total sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. And a total of two hundred forty-six claims totaling four hundred eighteen thousand ninety-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Motion to approve payroll and claims?
Seconds.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First up is Monty.
We just double team you again today.
How's it working?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We have ninety-three inmates, six are DOC and nine are F-6 DOCs which we keep. Since our last meeting, I had emailed things about our chiller, it let go. Luckily, we've got it repaired, they had it repaired that night, but we've got an evacuation drill done that night. But everything right now is working. Like they said, our chiller was made to work last about fifteen years, and we've got thirty years out of it so far. So we are getting, gonna try to have three estimates on the replacement, just to let you see what that will be.
Appreciate that.
Next thing is the radio equipment that the city of Bluffton and Wells County's been looking at. County attorney has looked over the contract.
Hundred and forty-three pages or whatever.
Yeah.
And we appreciate that. We put a lot of work on Friday to get it done in time for today, so thank you. Now, I think we had an agreement that we've already, we just need to sign it, or?
The contract was drawn up between Motorola and the sheriff. Sheriff would like your approval.
I just need your approval to sign it, so we, if we don't sign it by the 24th, we lose this discount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
So motion to allow Monty to sign the contract with Motorola.
And the same for the contract for this project.
And the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
What's today's date?
Twenty-one.
Thank you.
That easy.
That easy. Beth, if you want.
If you have a copy, please.
Yeah. Well, if you want to keep this, I'll just, I've got about the second thing.
Okay.
Copy of the signature, but we're gonna have to, I don't know.
You want a paper copy, Beth, or just a PDF?
PDF is fine.
Why don't you do this, why don't you?
Do I need it?
Why don't you copy the signature page after Monty signed it?
Okay.
And then send me that, and I'll put it in the PDF file and send it back to you, so you'll have a PDF file of what Monty signed.
Do you mind doing the same for me, Roy?
Yeah.
I'll make sure and send you that.
I don't know that I have yours.
I'll send you the updated contract today.
Yeah, yours is, your contract's really with the Bluffton Police Department?
Well, the money's coming from here. It's changed, it's Wells County 911.
Okay.
I will send you that.
Okay.
And then I'll send you the signature page. I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Don't let that clip fly off.
Yes.
If you want, I can put that signature page in that and send that back to you, then you'll have to kill a tree to print out another one of those.
When's the next Cubs game?
July 33rd.
Is that right?
First Americans, so we've got two more after that.
Oh, good.
Gotta keep busy.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, thanks.
See ya.
All you have to do is, thank you for getting all your help.
Thank you, guys.
Ted? Hey? Come together if you want to. I'm doing perfectly well. There's still a few.
Wake my head.
Sir. First thing I have is our hot mix project. We decided to do this here, it was 100 North from 450 East to 301. We did actually have four companies that took the specifications for that, and three actually put bids back in. So there's the prices for that section. And then I got a price for that last mile, we talked about doing it clear out to the county lines, so I just need your approval. Actually, these three firms did workforce last year. D and B did our 200 North project, West Walmart, Brooks did our project east of Walmart, and Milestone did our, some of our pipe crossings and stuff, so.
So are you making a recommendation?
Yeah, I would say we might as well go with Brooks. They're low on both projects. Talking to their representative Thursday when they turned this stuff in, they'll probably pick this up after the city streets in Bluffton get done. So probably sometime in July, first of August is when they would do these projects.
And maybe all the drainage issues addressed and taken care of?
Yep, yeah, two pipes are put in in April, they've settled, we patched them over. They're gonna wedge over both of them, pipes, as part of the wedging of the project. Several areas we're gonna wedge on it, so they'll do that first, and then they'll overlay everything.
Will we actually go wider a foot than what is currently there, or?
We weren't going to. We're gonna try to make it more consistent, because it's in and out.
Right, exactly, that's why I'm.
Yeah, we're gonna make it, we're gonna make it right at 20-foot the whole way through.
Right.
Yeah.
And that gives us 10-foot lanes, right?
Yes, yeah.
Can I get the way it is? Or do I need to look at it further?
I guess money's for the extra mile.
Figured I would just take that out of my highway fund.
Did we allocate that into the budget?
We, we have a line item in our highway fund called road repairs. We put that in several years ago, so there should be money left in there after my chip and seal program's done, to be able to pay for the extra cost to do that last mile. So it's actually, it's, there'll be money in the budget to do it.
Any other questions?
Do you think that's a wise thing to do, is put the extra 97 on that last mile, or do you think we?
Oh, would I just complete?
Just do it all?
Yes. Just my opinion.
Yeah.
That's what we appreciate.
We'll go on.
So motion to approve the complete project, including the extra mile, using Brooks' construction bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They were the low bid, too, so, yeah.
Did get our dust control second application done, did at the seventh and eighth, that went, that went well. I put working on road projects, I know Roy's got some information on 950 North, so I think I'll let him do that, and then I'll sort of update you what's going on with them, so.
We had a stack of easements, easement agreements that I was given last meeting, five were rejected by the recorder for various reasons, and they've all been, three have already been taken care of, the remaining two involved the individual had a fence located within the highway right-of-way, and, but anyways, he did call, and.
Hey, Roy, can you talk a little louder? Sorry.
The property owner who had a fence located within the county right-of-way did agree to sign the right-of-way agreement with a provision that the county put up a new fence on the new right-of-way line, and he called Ed and wanted a deadline for that, and Ed requested 90 days. So the agreement that he signed last Friday gives the county 90 days to install that new fence. So I have that right-of-way agreement. And then two of the other right-of-ways involved a trust and a small piece of property, .63 acres maybe, that was in the name of a deceased individual. Both those documents came back signed by the spouse's friend widow, and I explained, well, okay, a death certificate said he died in 2006, he had a will, but the will wasn't probated before January 1, 2011, which is the deadline for probating a will more than three years old. After, after January 1, 2011, you could still probate a will that hasn't been probated if you needed to clear up the title to an asset that's still in that individual's name. So that statute wasn't any of benefit there, but she came in and, and I asked her to bring in the trust agreement, she was crazy about me seeing it, but I said, I need to see it to see what happens when one of the co-trustees dies. Do we have a new co-trustee pop up that we need to get to sign, or are you the sole trustee? And she brought in the trust agreement, she was the sole trustee, so I'm comfortable with that. With respect to the .63 acres, that was in her husband's name alone, since he died effectively intestate, he had two, three children and a widow, so she came in with her daughter and her son, who was the property owner on the other easement. So I prepared a quitclaim deed for those three to deed the .6 acres into the trust, so it would be covered by the trust's easement. There's another daughter, Liz in Rochester, wasn't there, and I said, I'll, I'll send her a quitclaim, a quitclaim deed also to clear up the title. So it's kinda like, I'm helping her clear up her title, but I'm also protecting the county, that we know that the people who need to sign the documents are all, you know, on record as being the owners. So I have those two easements for the commissioner's acceptance.
Motion to allow all of us to sign.
Okay, motion to allow us all to sign the easements that are presented today.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have three copies?
Uh, one copy.
Thank you.
Short, key and forward, one.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. How long, 800?
Only here north, we have all our ditch work done, all our windows up and stuff like that, we just have a section that, waiting for the contractor to ask come in, take some trees out, and then we'll finish that, and it should be ready. He's gonna be here hopefully this week, I know, I'm gonna start him on 950 North, because we're working on that one now, trying to get the dirt work done on that. When we get done there, we'll be moving up on 400 West, and we'll start the dirt work and stuff on that. Just an update, we talked about getting the material from the AEP projects up there. It's not gonna happen for these projects. They took the material that was in the, or in the driveways that were in Wells County and put them over, because they're taking towers down in between the two legs, and they used that material. There is still some material up in Huntington County, but it will not be available until they actually hook the power line up in sometime in October. So my plans now are to probably put some 53s down first, about 2,500 tons in, in the mile, and then we are gonna get millings from the city of Bluffton Streets. Should be about 7,000 tons of that, that we'll probably put on top of that, and use that material up there to do these three projects, so.
Yeah, don't miss the opportunity, just get it done so it's.
Yes, yeah, and that's, that's the whole thing. It's, a lot depends on when the city's gonna undo it, they keep telling me after the 4th of July, but they aren't telling me how long after 4th of July, because I got a lot of dirt work to do up on 400 West.
You know what the city's deadline is to have everything done, complete, before school starts?
Yes, I think it was the 7th.
Okay.
So Ted just told me this morning, they're thinking of July 11th to start the millings and stuff like that. It will, it will take us actually two weeks, they're, they're thinking eight or nine days of milling, and stuff like that. So hopefully everything works that we can get stuff around and all that stuff, and, and use that material, so. Last meeting, I had some budget questions, just wanna know if we've figured anything out on that, or if that's something that's gonna come in discussion later, I, I think we're gonna talk about road conversions and stuff like that, if we can answer them then, which is fine. So, just some of the other stuff, we're still patching roads that we're gonna chip and seal, we are north, we've been up north about a week, we've got everything south patched. We do have our backhoe jobs done on the 800 North project, as far as things extended, and had a couple of pipes replaced and stuff like that, so. Did a couple more big pipe projects, actually have three more then to do, we might do one this week. Contractors doing my trees, I said that's priority number one for me, so let's get the trees done, so I can get the projects moving forward, and then, and then we got a couple, still the one on the East County line, I'm not sure when it's gonna happen, that's in sort of an Adams County project and stuff, so. That's all I have.
We were, we're doing three or four miles in the north part, or?
Three.
Three.
Three. The other one's four west, between 11 and 12 north.
I threw it out, at a meeting I was with them on Wednesday, and I would like to get another three miles or four miles done this year.
Okay.
So, and then maybe next year we can look at doing in excess of five.
Okay.
Miles, so I'm gonna just maybe have you guys give me suggestions, and then at the July meeting we'll make a recommendation, at least for this year's projects, and we can do next year's at a later date, so.
Okay. And I know you, you sort of talked about drainage projects, I think, for next year.
Drainage, what I would like, like to see, that as a separate line item in your budget.
Okay, which it is now.
And, but have it split into two, whatever, share. What we discussed, you have a fixed amount that you pay.
For drainage assessments?
Assessments.
Okay.
That should be a separate line item.
Okay.
Because that's, normally stays between 75 and 9,500 bucks.
Yeah, somewhere like that.
So maybe stick a 9,000 or 10,000 dollar number in that.
Okay.
And then take your assessment value and probably, we would like to see it at some point, if the council would agree, I see Chuck is in the audience, but put a number in, and if you don't use it, either encumber it or have it carried forward.
Okay.
Because we know at some time, things are gonna blow up, like in Liberty Center, Toxson, Craigville, Petroleum, Keystone.
So do you know what kind of figure you want me to put in there?
Well.
Probably 20?
We just have to have an understanding that the council's aware of it.
Okay.
And if they're aware of it, then they know at some point in time, there might be a hundred thousand dollar item we need to address, and if we don't address it now, then we don't wanna catch them off guard, that way they're.
I think we threw out 20 to start with.
I think, 20 would be a number to.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
I, I had worked on easement agreements for 1,200 south.
Yes.
To extend that further, so Todd Feigter picked those up to get those signed.
That's just planning ahead in case we decide to go that route, and I appreciate you doing that, Roy, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, hon.
Three this year, five, up to five next year?
Minimum five.
Minimum five, okay.
Minimum five.
At least five next year, sorry. Thank you. Three more, three this year.
Yep. Yep. I'll have more items to hand out here, so. Start with the first being USI's consulting agreement for designing bridges two and two of three. They've made the revisions that were proposed. Total project for both projects is $66,000, there's two copies of the same agreement, I just need to have one original for them and one original for the record, and if I can get a digital copy of that. That includes all of the Title VI revisions to it, so I don't believe if there were any other changes that need to be made to that contract, if so, we can, if I can just have approval to sign that with provisions.
Yeah, I, I did review it, I think the only change that I had talked about, Nate and I had talked about that was still in there, there's, there's still a two-line paragraph, either party can terminate. The, the termination essentially is kinda open-ended at this point, as far as them terminating or we terminating. This is their standard form of agreement, we've talked about kinda modifying that in the future, coming up with a standard boilerplate for agreements that we use. Unfortunately, those weren't ready at this point, we still need to purchase the licenses for those. If you're comfortable with that, I don't.
Well, we've dealt with this company before.
Correct, they've done, their, their books are here, they've.
Right.
They're certainly hoping for future work, I can't imagine that they would.
Right, exactly.
Walk away, it's just, it's a risk factor that's in there.
Sure.
I, I think in the future we'll, we'll modify it so that we can terminate the agreement with clause. They would have to have clause in the future to try to terminate it, but then we'd have certain timeframes and subtle nuances in those agreements, but it's all trying to control risk. So if you're comfortable with that, I, I would just need your signatures on those, and then I can get a digital copy from my records and return one.
So moved.
USI.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
And council's already appropriated the money, or moved the money over for these, this is just essentially us working out the contracts there. Second item I have is on Bridge 193.
Yep.
There's been a list of change orders, and during a progress meeting, I come to find out that we do not have signatures on these change orders or work orders yet, so I've come prepared with those. For those, doesn't get too confusing. The three change orders, one was for unsuitable soils, I believe that was presented before I started, and that was approved, but we still need to get signatures on that change order, so that can be turned over to NDOT. The second one is for some stringer repairs, these were unforeseen repairs for the steel members underneath the deck, once the deck was removed, they found that, so that's a toll here. And then change order number three was the sway frame, the overhead repairs that were hit. Initially, they were discussing around a $46,000 repair to, to heat treat and keep the historic items in place. We've worked with them as far as saying, let's replace those, use round-headed bolts, which has been approved by NDOT, and that total came down to 13,382. So, and there has been a seven-day approximately extension to the contract as part of the, a part of these repairs, but the total for all three change orders is 39,524 and 50 cents. That's about 2.76% of the overall contract. So there's two copies of each here for those three. I tried to create some posted notes to where the signature pages are on those three items.
So we approved the first two, but do we need to approve the last change order? I don't remember approving that.
You would need to, because I need to have the signatures from the commissioners to turn that over.
So motion to sign all of the orders and to approve the, the third one as stated today.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Third item on my list.
For you to sign?
It only has two signatures.
Yeah, there's only two signatures that are required on that.
You guys go ahead and sign if you want.
Correct, one of them was for seven-day extension.
What, what actually date will that be, in the book, conflict with normal school opening?
There is a potential as far as the end of the contract date, I have not gotten from them an updated project schedule, so I know when the detour will be ending. So it's possible that the detour will still be done in time for school, but there is, there is a potential that the detour may still be in place at the start of the school year, but that would be for less than a week at this point. So, we are working with them to try to get the detour pulled and have the road open, even if they're still doing some finishing contract items at this point.
a little bit this morning, that we only have this in a separate fund, or there's probably not gonna be enough money to pay for all these change orders in there. So I guess I was gonna get with Beth and say, okay, do we wanna wait till this project's completely done, and then transferring that, what we need to, or, I don't know how we wanna do that for sure.
For Bridge 193?
Yes, yes, and 8105.
You don't think there's enough in there?
I don't think there's enough in there.
Let me check.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do some checking on that and see.
Because we had extra.
Yeah, but then we also had DLZ, had a $80,000 supplemental contract, too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check.
Okay, and then the last thing I heard from David Armstrong from NDOT, and this is just last week, because the last invoice I sent in for DLZ was for part of this supplemental contract, and he came back again, there's no funds available at this time, so.
From what I understand, it's, it's very unlikely that we're gonna see additional federal match with these items. So, we're gonna look at future projects, trying to restructure a few items to try to avoid having to essentially us eat change orders like this, so.
Like, like it was, we, we took the little bit and saved the state.
Saved the state money.
A lot of money, and then in turn, we find mistakes and errors, and.
Now they're our responsibility.
We have to eat ourselves here, we'll.
So, so, we're gonna, we're gonna look into it, there are some things that we can do within the project scoping to try to avoid this, but it, it takes some time to try to develop, right now, it's just, at this point, it's not something that we have the ability to do. Next item here was a right-of-way permit, I received something from Frontier for essentially a road crossing, it's just a service drop. I don't want to use the same buried utility permit that we put together that would be recorded, because this is just a residential service drop.
For Bridge One ninety-three?
Yes, yes, and maybe one oh five.
You don't think there's enough in there?
I don't think there's enough in there.
Let me check.
Yeah, we'll do some checking on that and see.
Because we had extra.
Yeah. But then we also had DLZ had a eighteen thousand dollar supplement contract too.
Yeah, we'll check.
And then the last thing I heard from David Armstrong from NDOT, and this is just last week, because the last invoice I sent in for DLZ was for part of this supplement contract, and he came back again, and there's no funds available at this time.
From what I understand, it's very unlikely that we're going to see additional federal match with these items. So we're going to look at future projects, trying to restructure a few items to try to avoid having to essentially us eat change orders like this.
Like it was, we took the little bit and saved the state.
Saved the state money.
A lot of money, and then in turn, we find mistakes and errors, and.
Now they're our responsibility. So we're going to, we're going to look into it. There are some things that we can do within the project scoping to try to avoid this. But it takes some time to try to develop. Right now, it's just, at this point, it's not something that we have the ability to do. Next item here was a right-of-way permit. I received something from Frontier for essentially a road crossing. It's just a service drop. I don't want to use the same buried utility permit that we put together that would be recorded, because this is just a residential service drop. What I, what I'd like to ask, or at least kind of put on record, is that if it's just a residential service connection to a public utility that parallels ours, that I just sign off on those, just making conditions our standard documentation as far as provisions for them to locate and the rest. Frontier's certainly going to be a good partner in that. Then I'm not bogging down meetings like this with these sort of requests. So if you're comfortable with it, if it's not a new main extension or a service extension, I don't see the need to bring those before the commissioners, so.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Another item here, community crossings matching grant. So you're aware the deadline has been extended. I've got an extra two weeks to try to prepare any grant application, so essentially the final's been moved an extra few days for me. So I wanted to let you know that, so, and it's now July twenty-ninth. So if there's any time that we need to put other work together, we can certainly do that. We know of two projects that we're going to submit at this point for the community crossings grants, so we're moving forward on developing that application. I'm working with USI on that. If there's other projects, I just need to know, and then we'll submit those as additional projects. Each one will be an individual application, so.
I guess from my standpoint, I just don't want to leave money on the table.
Correct.
There's money to be given, fifty cents for every dollar, you know.
There are quite a few projects for us to go after. I think we'd be foolish not to request over a million dollars, because the million dollars is our cap. Especially if we're planning on doing the work anyway.
Right.
That's the, that's the goal, and I think with, if we're intending additional conversions yet this year, into next year, we can put those in. It's just how we scope those and have structured for the estimates.
Have to have one or two, three or four projects.
Yep, so each one deserves its own application, and then we see where they go. And then we'll put a priority list together as far as your application. So that's something that they do want, is our preferred projects in order. But we can, we can identify that now, and we've got initial two weeks to figure that out, so that's, that will be helpful. Just for your information, I will be down in Richmond on Wednesday this week for an LTAP training, part of our Pacer rating for this roadway inventory project. I'll be getting briefed by LTAP staff on what they want to see on that application. And then item number six, ADA transition plan. We've talked about that somewhat early on. I've submitted some draft recommendations as far as revisions. I'd like to get the commissioner's approval to meet with NERC, Northeast Indiana Regional Coordinating Council. They helped draft the plan originally. I'd like to meet with Stacy, I'm not going to butcher her last name, Gorkis, Gors?
Gorsa.
Gorsa? Gorsa? Okay, sorry. I'll apologize to them now on record.
Call it easy.
So we, and I'd like to make some revisions to the plan. I'd like to get their input into it. I want to see what they'd be willing to do for us as far as doing assessments. I'd like to redo some of the assessments, because they date back to two thousand and two on parts of this, even though the plan is somewhat newer than that. And before we make a recommendation, then I can take a completed revised plan back for the commissioner's approval. So if you're willing to allow that, then I'll, we'll put a wholesale revision together, and then it's not a back-and-forth discussion for months on end, so.
Good idea.
Good idea.
Thank you very much. That's the last item on mine. Have any questions for me?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Parking lot. Mike and staff.
Grab an extra chair.
I'll be right back.
Morning, Mike. Morning.
First, let me introduce the people accompanying me. To my right is Glenn Plummer, who is Vice President of the Bargain Hut. To my left is Carol Powell, our store manager. And of course, I'm the President of the organization. When I was first appointed to this position, I had no idea the situations that were going to arise, that I would be expected to deal with. I am not a contractor. And I have two different bids that you see before you that we'll be getting into in just a few moments. But it's very easy to snowball me when it comes to, well, we're going to put nine stone on this, and that's the size of the stone, not the weight of the stone. And, and how much asphalt is asphalt? And what I'm saying here is, if you get too deep, I am turning to my resident expert who is, been involved in construction for a number of years and can quote things far better than I. So rather than look like a total fool, Carol can help share it with me. Okay? Let's begin in the beginning. My board came to me and said that our parking lot was in major need of repair. I think Blake has been out there and examined it, and he went out with Mr. Monahan Smith.
Todd, yeah, he inspected it.
And there is definite need for repair. But one of the major problems that we have is we have big trucks coming in there a couple of times a week. Specifically, our garbage trucks and the goodwill trucks. And they're big. And the second problem that we have, well, yeah, a second problem that we have is a time factor. We are a business, and we can't afford to shut down for too long of a period of time. Now, the top one, top asphalt guaranteed they could get the job done in two days. We do not open our store on Mondays and Tuesdays. We have people in the rear of the store, in the warehouse, but we could park across the street. That presents no problem. But then that raises questions in my mind, what kind of a job you're going to do for me in three days? The other one is talking about at least a week. Depending upon the weather, depending upon who knows what. And I don't know if we can afford to shut our store down for a couple of weeks while they make up their mind. They're going to get the project done. Now, let me take a look at the two at the top. Top asphalt said they can get it done for eleven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Oh, and I, I need to also add that in discussions with Blake, he proposed the idea of filling the holes, letting it set, and then coming back with the asphalt the next year. And talking to my expert, she says that's a good idea. Okay? The second one wants to do it in one fell swoop. But basically, he wants to put in an entirely new parking lot. Top asphalt, when talking about a guarantee, he wants qualifiers. How big are the trucks going to be? How often are they going to be on the surface? I don't know how much these trucks weigh. The things that I noticed, the most obvious is the subsurface on number two is going to be totally removed. And it's going to be replenished with some size stone. Kevin, you might know more about that than I do as far as what's the size of the stone would be. Once that's replaced, then they're going to put an overlay surface of one and a half inches. Now, Carol, could you tell me how long it takes asphalt to set up?
Overnight.
Okay. The last three were names that Blake gave me, and I don't remember. It was sometime last week.
Probably Thursday, I'm guessing Thursday.
Well, I contacted these three organizations, and I apologize for the last one, that Summers asphalt. Summers was just out there this morning doing some measuring, and they all said that they could get an email bid to me by Wednesday of this week, and then I could send it to Blake and.
I can email it out to the staff.
My initial thought, our initial thought was, we've got a man that does roads. Let's go to Ed. Ed can fix it for us. Well, Ed tells me he only does chip and seal. And that's worth it, as far as our needs are concerned.
You've been in this building how long? Do you know? And you remember the condition of it?
Nineteen fifty-seven, based on our little pamphlet we have. And that's the other thing. We have never repaired to any extent that parking lot since nineteen fifty-seven.
So we don't know what the actual surface is on it, when it was actually put down?
No.
So we don't know the actual life it's.
It was used as a residential area prior to our use. And as far as I know, they just threw stone down, and that was it.
I think it's safe to say in about guarantee that whatever's put down now will not hold up as long as it did previously.
Yes.
That's pretty much a given. I don't care what's done anymore. They just, it's not done the same.
All of these not there?
Right.
And here's where we get to the last point, and for me, it's the most important point. It's the financial aspect of it. Obviously, we would love you to take the burden, since we are technically part, we are under county government. Would love you to take, but the more you decide that we must pay X number of dollars means that we're going to cut back on our donations to various organizations and eliminate or partially eliminate our scholarships. Just that simple.
Sure.
We can't afford that kind of money.
Just for a summary, how does Bargain Hut work? I mean, it's been around forever, as long as I can remember.
Originally, it was an auxiliary at a Wells Community Hospital. They were basically the volunteers. And when a Wells community, why am I talking?
Merged.
Merged. When did the volunteers move out?
About two thousand.
Okay, so about two thousand, we began to operate independent.
And what, what are you under now? Where do you fall? You said you're under the county government, but what, how's it listed?
There is, Kevin, what's the name of that committee that we have to report to?
The foundation?
Jones County Foundation? Okay, thank you.
They do that once a year.
Have a role in deciding any of this?
We own the building, but you own the ground.
So do we, we had brought up a previous discussion regarding that roof replacement, and we ever?
We went happy zone.
You what?
We fifty-fifty, okay.
You paid half, we paid half.
I, I, all we have, I'm not even sure in the minutes indicates.
We couldn't find that we were repaid anything on it, or who did the repair?
It was an homage gentleman from Adams County.
That's what you thought too.
That's what I thought. And we had checked the minutes back in thirteen.
Yeah.
And it was talked about and discussed.
Yeah.
But we never had any follow-up of how it actually transpired.
Well, I can tell you is we only paid half.
Yeah.
As soon as you get those emails, I think we can come to some sort of agreement that there would be participation.
That would be wonderful.
I can't guarantee you what percentage or what dollar amount or whatever, but I think we can come to some sort of agreement to have some sort of level of participation. Am I speaking out of turn?
No. No, Mike, okay. My question, Mike, is on the, on the larger of the two proposals. Is, are they actually going to scrape off the existing asphalt down to like whatever base is there, and then they would redo a stone base underneath, roll it in, and then put their asphalt down?
And there's another element to be considered, B and E is union, the other one is not.
Do you have paperwork from either one of these bids where they itemized things that we could see the actual?
I do for number one.
Specifications of what they're offering to do.
The other one was simply a conversation.
We need that probably printed, and you need to look at that.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we have, without discussing any more dollars, but to have each one of them bid in a way of repairing the areas that need repaired. And then coming in next year or the following year, saying at one level and determine inch and a half coat.
Yeah, I would do.
Overthin', over everything.
Just an overlay?
Yeah, just an overlay, and have it that way, so we know we're comparing apples to apples. And then.
I can do that.
That would probably be my recommendation. What do you think?
Clear enough?
I think that's what conversation probably with.
That's what Todd alluded to, so let's do it that way, and then as soon as they get, you get an email to me, or I can pick them up or whatever. That way, we can hand them out to these guys.
I need your email.
Z E R O.
Zero.
At Adams Wells Lot Down.
Not to be confused with.
As soon as I get them, I'll forward them on to you, and I'll go back to B and E and get them more specific.
Okay.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mike, lots of energy. You are up next.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hi, I'm here in front of you today. We're looking at starting to take credit and debit card electronic payments for our permitting and application fees. In the planning commission office, and we're working with a company called Value Payment Systems, which is a company that was suggested to us or recommended to us through the Snagger Corporation, which is our permitting software provider. Roy had three questions brought up about the initial. Roy had three questions, brought up about the initial contract that was written. All three of those were resolved. So the, they were willing to allow us to, or to not have the issue of the treasurer's offices to other contracts they have right now be a conflict in exclusivity clause. So they basically, in writing, said that that was okay, as long as we marked down exactly what we were taking payments for. So with our permit fee and application fees, they weren't going to look at that. The contract would be a two-year term, which we would renew at the end of the two years, but would not be automatic. And the last one was...
Choice of law and venue?
Yes, and they made it Wells County Local Court.
Tennessee.
Yeah, in Senate Tennessee.
An Indiana law or Tennessee law?
Indiana law, yes.
I was asked to review a contract, and I had some concerns about some of the provisions. One of the provisions, the company is a Tennessee company, so their contract said, and interpreting the contract, Tennessee law applies.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I mean, they're doing business in Indiana. I would think Indiana law ought to apply.
Yeah.
I was concerned about whether or not the contract, I mean, who's the contract with? Is it with Area Plan, or is the contract being proposed to the commissioners to sign? I know as county attorney, the county treasurer's gone through two payment processing services. And so for one branch, one office in the county to come up with a contract that says they're going to be exclusive causes me some concern. Beyond the treasurer's office, the, it's my understanding from talking with the county clerk and Judge Antrim is that the twenty-ninth, I believe, is the go date for the county to go to electronic filing. Well, electronic filing, both in any new, we're talking about court cases, any new court cases as well as filings in any existing cases. Our office had a, you know, the local office is on one end, the court's on the other end, but you've got some intermediaries. You've got an intermediary going to the state, and then the state and the county, and so anyways, one of the intermediaries that we're allowed to choose is Docs Pop, and they are getting into this e-filing, but they're already into document research. So if you're wanting to, say, I want to search Jay County records using Docs Pop, I can do that. And according to the Docs Pop people, I can even from my office get a copy of the deed in Jay County using that. So our office is going to go with Docs Pop because it had services beyond the e-filing. But anyways, part of the e-filing was, okay, fine, I'm going to initiate a case, I'm going to e-file, how do I pay the court costs? And so Docs Pop says you're going to pay using a credit card. So my concern is not only do we have the treasurer, but the clerk's office is going to be processing credit cards. Is that through, is that a choice she has, or she has no choice in it because this is the state?
That's a good question.
So you've got a lot of different organizations. Don't get me wrong, I see some value in that, and I see some value in maybe having one or two instead of fifteen different processors. But to say that the commissioners ought to sign a contract foreclosing, and without even taking, I mean, do you have any idea, have you talked with the clerk to see how they're going to process payments?
No, I'm not, I was not aware that they were...
That's a concern I have, and the clerk has not given me that, she's not brought me up to speed on that. I'm just saying, I think before we get too crazy, maybe we ought to check with all the different departments to see what interests they have in processing, and if they have any existing arrangement. The recorder's office is another one. If we go, if the recorder's office goes to e-filing, and if they go to Docs Pop, I mean, I know one of the concerns recorder's had is, well, what about the document fees? And the Docs Pop people tell me, well, when you, when you request a document from Jay County or La Porte County or whatever, you're going to pay your dollar per page document fee. Well, somebody's going to be processing those. So I'm saying that, I'm not trying to throw cold water at them, I just think it would make sense to take stock and inventory as to what county offices and departments are interested in this, and what they might have in the works in terms of plans before, especially if you're, if the contract's going to be of the commissioners. I don't think the commissioners want to foreclose without knowing what all the other hands are doing.
Sure. And I know, we did talk with the health department and the surveyors' office, and they had limited interest in doing something right now, but that's where that was at the time, so, and we sent an email out, I believe, to as many of the offices as we could, to try to see if there was any other offices that were interested in starting something at this moment. But at the time, I was just aware that the treasurer's office was the only one that was taking payments through another vendor.
Do you feel that this delivers more time to investigate and bring it up at the next meeting?
Well, my first, my first question is, this contract is between who? Just Area Plan and then, or the county?
We could review that, or we could look at it that way. We just always said, ran all our contracts through the commissioners.
No, I understand that, and I appreciate it. When I responded to you, I said, here's what the county...
Normally...
...policy is. And this was before, I think Kevin might have been the only commissioner on board at that time, but as I see it, the ordinance said, any, was it any elected official or anybody else designated are a purchasing agent, and they can do these without going through the commissioners.
Yeah.
And if I've interpreted that right, and if Area Plan's one of those offices, I don't, I don't know that they necessarily need to...
I know by statute, the Plank Commission can sign their own contracts. This, in this case, there was, there seemed to be value in looking at it as a county-wide option in case another office would...
I don't disagree with that, but if the contract's beyond just Area Plan, then I, then I would not think the commissioners would be wise to sign any exclusive contract without checking with other offices, to me. I mean, if you were the county clerk and you were going to go to filing these...
Let's do that and bring it up at the July meeting. Hopefully, that's enough time that, unless that's...
Well, our push, our push is that we have a lot of people that want to be able to pay via credit or debit card online and get their...
But can they wait another month?
They probably can. It's, the pressure's on us from contractors that want to be able to do it.
We'll leave that to you. If you feel pressured into doing it, then I won't need to be on your contract alone. If not, then you can bring it back.
I mean, I'm glad, I'll be glad to wait and see what you guys want to do. I know Value Payment Systems collects the state taxes. They're one of them, and they may be the company that does the...
Well, and the proposal that you...
Until we find out, yeah.
In the proposal you gave me, it looked like it was more designed to collection of real estate taxes.
That's, that's what they wrote down, but then in, you fill out what you're going to be in its permit fees and other things, yes.
If they're processing payments, they don't care what it's for, it's just how they're processing it.
Yes.
So, let's do that.
So what do you want us to do in the meantime? Do you want to try to have an office order meeting or something about that?
I would think the clerk should be involved, and the recorder's office should be involved. I mean, what do you think, Beth? Is there a need in your department?
We take very low, I mean, we take all transfer fees, but...
But mostly that's cash or check, right?
But I, you know, I'm not saying that we couldn't.
Yeah.
You know?
And I don't think anybody has, it's not because you have to, it's just you might want to.
It's a convenience.
Yeah, it's a convenience option, yeah.
It's going to be upon the user, not the county, so...
Now, there is a specific pricing point for people that are using Snyder Corporation's software. There's a separate pricing point for offices that don't. So when we talk to the health department, there's a different pricing range or fee setup for those. But Snyder Corporation worked with Value Payment Systems to come up with a pricing system for anybody that was using their software as kind of a bulk purchase option. So there's, it's separate. So the health department, we had a, the health department wanted to see what their pricing was, and it's a little different.
So they're not willing to give that price to the other departments even though it's part of the...
It's very similar. The numbers weren't all that much different. It was just a little bit, there were more options available to people with the Snyder software package than there were for the health department, but it's still all the debit and credit cards. The Snyder Corporation were the, like Google Pay and some of the other item PayPal type payments that may be a little bit different or included.
Is that company willing to do that just for the Area Plan Commission?
I'm sure they would be, as far as, they've, they've been very flexible whenever we've talked to them, and I think we could do that.
I mean, that's one option to say, well, for now, Area Plan is comfortable with that, so long as you understand that there are other, and it might be good to have it, that they understand that this just is Area Plan, and there are other county offices and departments that, that may or may not be using other...
If that's the, I mean, we can have that, we can have a meeting sometime together.
We've got one scheduled in July, Department Head Meeting, second one's in July.
Maybe we look to see if we can do something sooner, maybe, and see if we want to keep everybody's offices separate, or if we want to look at something together.
I think you just do that internally.
Okay.
And then, I would make, I would suggest that we approve it, letting Area Plan do it itself.
And then anybody that wanted to, maybe then we could add on to that possibly in the future?
And do that at our first July meeting or something.
Because that county ordinance specifically talked about contracts for services. It just wasn't good. It's like if you want to order paint for you, but also services. Another consideration is, it is election year, and I don't know that I necessarily want to tie the hands of incoming people.
Very good. Thank you for the recommendation, Rob.
Okay. So we'll go around and talk to the department heads and see exactly what, if there's an interest across the board to try to do it as Wells County, or if not, we will probably come back with one that's just with our department's name on it for you guys to sign. Okay?
All right.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Beth, you are?
I'm up.
You are up.
Okay, the only thing I have is, I've sent you through email a lot of information regarding a board appointment application that we've kind of come up with. Sammy, I did make the final change before this morning, and brought that over, and this was all brought up because we have a library where appointment is coming up, and we want to know how we wanted to advertise and what we wanted to do, so we thought maybe it might be a good idea to just do an application process. So that's why I'm just, if this is something you guys are wanting to do, we can kind of adopt this policy, that we will just have, you know, advertise for the appointment, have them contact the auditor's office to get the application and complete the application in turn that will be sent out to you guys to review, and then, you know, tell them when the appointment is. And I assume that when they come for the night of the appointment, you could do any kind of interviewing or any questions at that time, you know, make your appointment. That's just kind of an idea, if that's something that you're wanting to do.
I think it's a good idea, and the only thing is to give a specific time because we are allowed to do it prior to the expiration of a term, correct? I mean, they, how do you want to say, if somebody's term expires at the end of August, do we have the deadline as July 31st?
I think you set your own deadline, it's just when your appointment takes effect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah.
But there, sometimes they go past.
Right, and that happens. Sometimes we're not notified till the last minute, that, oh, yeah, you know, we have a, somebody that's, and the terms are different, you know, some are four-year terms, and some are annual terms. Most of, most of them are four-year terms, but, yeah, but a lot of times they might not get us the information in time that we get advertised, to get time out there for advertising. This one in particular, we do, it's not really appointed till July 15th and 16th. One's council and one's commissioners. And, you know, so we have time, you know, if you want, you know, for me to put the ad in the paper and the deadline of what we have, so we, that gives us time to get the applications in.
Right.
It's plenty of time for this particular incident. But if we didn't get them in time, it's like, Lori, if we didn't get it in time, you know, it depends on what their bylaws are, if the person stays on until the next appointment is then, or if they just done, and then they just have a vacancy whenever they have their meeting till the, you know, the next one is appointed, if we run past, you know, that I wouldn't know.
Yeah, I don't know, but we had that with township trustees, didn't we? Where nobody filed, and so...
Yeah.
I think that statute might have said, you serve until...
You serve until you get somebody in.
I can't, I can't say that's what...
And that's why I said, it kind of depends on each particular organization, if, you know, their particular bylaws that tells them how they do it.
But as far as the application process, that's independent of their bylaws and what their...
Right, this is just for your, for your appointment, because they're saying that you appointed, so...
Did a nice job on it, and I think it's...
Put out the direction. We're good? Okay, we'll just go with that by advertising it and asking them to contact me to get an application. Okay?
Yep.
And that's the only thing I have.
And you'll put that on the county website as well, probably?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll make a note, we can put it up there.
Anything else, Roy?
A lot of stuff's going on, I know that.
Yeah, not that I can think of right now. Don't hold me to it.
Kevin, anything?
Nothing.
Tim? Just, anything? Audience, open for comments.
Welcome to the adjournment.
Second.
We are finished. Thank you, everyone.